April 4, 2023. I declare that there is a quorum of board members present and that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. First agenda item is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next agenda item is approval of the board meeting minutes from March 21, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next agenda item is to enter into executive session for the stated purposes of discussion of release of teachers from employment contracts and/or appointment of administrators as needed, update regarding pending litigation matters, and receipt of the attorney-client legal advice pertaining to the same for The Compass Municipal Advisors LLC and Hub International Limited, Hub International Midwest Limited, Knopf Insurance Agency Inc., Stanley J. Porchny, Scott Porchny, and Brantley Thomas and Jackson v. Berkeley County School District, and update and receipt of legal advice regarding proposed settlement of BCSD v. Juul Labs, Inc., eight student expulsion appeals. Do we have a motion to enter into executive session for those stated purposes? We got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in executive session.
Every day is about the students for me.
100% because of the kids.
Just the kids.
Our kids are absolutely our why. Why we all do what we do.
Good morning. Hi.
I wake up every morning knowing it is my responsibility to give.
I get up and I come to work every day because I need to be here for them.
It makes you feel good because it's why we're here. I like what I do and I think it makes a difference.
I could have had any other job in the world, but I'm a teacher.
Being a part of this fraternity of teachers and really making a difference in kids' lives.
Bringing a positive difference to students because I'm helping them think beyond the classroom.
It's a real collaborative effort. We all bring our parts to the table and say, how do we make this puzzle work as best we can?
Survivors ready? Go!
When you do something like this, this is the sort of thing that really sticks in their mind and helps them remember things down the road.
I think that's every educator's ultimate goal, is for them to see themselves how we see them.
There are students from Kane Bay's EMS program that are working on ambulances.
The look on these kids' faces and the interests grow, that's just amazing to me.
We are sending kids from Berkeley County into the community that are directly giving back to the community now in terms of the jobs that they are doing. And that's awesome.
Proud is just not even the word. It exceeds that.
I guess I'd just like to be able to give back to the community since the district's given me so much.
Whatever I need to make the students be successful, it happens here.
We're doing a lot of cool stuff here. There's a lot of neat things happening.
No place I would rather be than in Berkeley County.
I love Berkeley County because it actually gave me a space. Can you see my eyes? Can you see my eyes?
Berkeley County has been good to me, so I absolutely love it. I will give all I have to give to Berkeley County till I can't give anymore.
I'm proud of what we do here. We work as a team. We help each other. And we're helping the students. And we're making a difference.
They're the reason. And now I have six kids that I've taught that are in law school or lawyers. I'm just beyond happy. And it's because of them.
The satisfaction I get every time I come home at night knowing that I'm making a difference in somebody's life, I mean, that's what does it for me.
Looking at this picture, what is this section right here that's in between? So what is this whole section right here called?
Sports medicine at Berkeley High School is a program where students take sports med 1, 2, and 3.
We've been learning anatomy. You need anatomy to be a doctor or anything else like that.
It's not just kids who are interested in sports med. It's people who want to be doctors or nurses or really anything in the health field get that opportunity to go in there and get that hands-on experience.
Sports medicine 3 is like the more hands-on course where they're actually at the games and at the practices helping out.
I love training basketball and football. That's probably my favorite. I'm Carson Taylor. This is my third year in sports medicine. I signed up for it and I was like, this is really, really cool. And so when I started that, that made me realize that I wanted to be a trainer. So now I'm going to college for that.
It's really important to have these kids get exposure to different career fields instead of them just going to college and trying to figure it out.
They get to do true hands-on work with the instructor in the sports medicine room.
I love taping and doing modalities.
Just getting their bodies prepared before they start the game.
It is one thing to sit in a classroom and get your typical classroom instruction. It is another thing to get the hands-on collaborative work that our teachers are giving in our career and technical education classes. Learning how to talk to people, learning how to work collaboratively in a group on a real-world, hands-on project, that is something that you don't necessarily get in an academic class.
This is definitely what I'm supposed to be doing. It's super, super fun, super rewarding. So anybody who would want to do it should definitely try it.
Seeing these kids excited to get something has been truly a blessing. Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
High five. Christina Wingo, child nutrition supervisor.
It's nice to meet you. I'm Christina. I'm from Child Nutrition.
National School Breakfast Week was last week. So for each day that students ate breakfast with us, they were entered into a drawing. And all of those students were randomly selected. And we've been out delivering iPads and bicycles and earbuds. These are for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So some of them are kind of shocked. They're in disbelief. They can't believe that they actually won something. That is for you. You won. Some kids have cried. Some have been kind of in a state of shock and weren't really sure what to say.
I won?
You won. That is all for you. I think she loved me more than my own kids do. That is your lucky day, girlfriend. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
I'm so glad you're excited. She was really excited. Are you speechless? We've had a great day giving back to Berkeley County and we're just glad to be here to do it. You're welcome. There's this reaction you live for. We love and appreciate all of you.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It's a lot of fun.
I always had a passion for cooking.
It's kind of a break from school.
Making different things, preparing different things, learning different skills.
If you pay attention, you get a whole lot more than just cooking.
Look how nice that is. It's just enough to come together. This is Level 1, Culinary 1. You don't buy sugar like that. Starts at 9 and goes to 11:54, so it's three and a half hour class. So what we're going to do is we're just going to kind of go back forth, go back forth. This facility is treated no differently than a regular restaurant.
This operates as a kitchen.
We're certified by DEHEC. We get two to three inspections a year.
Make sure that we're doing what needs to be done.
Making sure you're being healthy and clean and sanitary.
Right now, I'm cutting chicken. I'm just dicing it a little bit.
So I'm taking the chicken right now. And we're just wrapping it around the bacon. So who wouldn't enjoy baking and chicken together?
What do you want, the chicken?
The most exciting thing is when they come on a Monday, say, hey, I just made this. This is what I made for my parents. This is what I made for my dad. And they'll make either something we've done here with a variation or they just decided to create something different.
We made rice. It was very simple. I went home and I made it myself. And it was just as good.
That's really the best thing because they're doing what they're being trained to do and they show enthusiasm for it. What do you think, Ish? Not bad? I just want kids to have some life skills so they could cook for their little brother, they could cook for their sister. Whether they pursue it at a post-secondary level or not, I just want them to be able to do something for themselves. They can save money and they can eat better. It's been a great, greatest 18 years. I've got super kids. I have super support from the county. Whatever I need to make the students be successful, it happens here.
I love him. Being in a classroom with him is always fun. Just being around him is fun.
Learning different life skills he teaches us, learning different techniques and different tricks you can use throughout, not just in culinary, but also in your life.
It makes you feel good because it's why we're here. I like what I do and I think it makes a difference. I'm here because of the kids. I wouldn't go anywhere else.
I think one of the best things about working here at Philip Simmons is my coworkers.
I love the unity among the staff and the camaraderie. I feel like we all get along really well.
I think that's what makes working here and teaching here so fun.
Happy Twins Day.
Twins Day is something that we have been doing for about four years now. Every Wednesday, Ms. Bowen and I just like to match. It's just something fun to break up the week. One of our stains used to be that we could remind people what day of the week it was. We plan our outfits the night before. And it's fun. The kids kind of get in on it too and it's meant to look forward to.
Happy Twins Day. Check it out.
It started as an accident. We would show up to work a couple of times wearing pretty similar outfits.
Our classic outfit is like black pants, white tee, and a jean jacket.
It just kind of, okay, we'll do it again and then again. And it then just became a thing every Wednesday. And once we did it once, we were like, now we need to keep this up. Haven't skipped a day. We have a couple pictures of when she's not here or during COVID. And I had to quarantine and she had to teach from home. So I had her on my smartboard. And then I was standing and someone took our picture of me on the smartboard. So never miss a Twins Day.
That's true.
She's a real-life twin. She is a real-life twin.
I am a real-life twin.
A real-life twin, twinning.
Yeah.
But most of the time, it's just what we have in our closet. We got this shirt as a gift. A student bought us these shirts. Here's our first, our initial photo, Twins Day.
It's available.
And then we had these two trying to copy us. I think the people that are so nitpicky, like your Apple Watch bands don't match. That's not the same purple whereas like your bracelet, your watch band. And that just makes it fun. But I think it's just fun to have the people picking on us and something to look forward to in the week. Twins Day, Feliz Twins Day, everyone. I'm even wearing my official Twins Day shirt. I feel like it does bring the school together. And I think that's our goal, is to bring joy during the week. It's just something fun to show people. We like our jobs. We have fun at our jobs because we're still here for the kids. Happy Twins Day.
I love him. He's just amazing.
A people person, fun-loving.
Every morning he comes in and he walks by my room. He's like, hey, Ms. Atkins.
Pleasant attitude, just a good student to be around.
My name is Delaren Hugi. I'm a junior at Cross High School.
The word I always use to describe him is he's a dog.
I love the game, playing on the court.
He plays hard, intense.
And he's still on top of us about school.
I always stress to them, they're student athletes. Student athletes first.
He just made us run the other day for getting in trouble in class.
They know that's non-negotiable. If you don't do the right thing in class, you won't play. And if a teacher has to contact me, you know you're going to pay. I always tell them, I'm more proud of anything you do in the classroom than on the basketball court.
In 7th grade, we typically look at our upcoming 6th graders. So when it came down to Delaren, he had some behavioral issues.
I kept getting in trouble.
He got into some little incidents here and there.
Playing in classes with other students, getting suspended. I did it to myself.
As time went on and as he got older, he just got progressively better.
You get older, you got to mature.
The behaviors that we were looking for, we didn't see.
You got to have the right people around you that push you to do better.
He sought our help. We made sure he got it. He was receptive to all the supports that we were giving him.
Teachers pushed me in school, most definitely, like Ms. Atkins.
Every day is about the students for me.
We're using the inverse operation.
My name is Angel Atkins and I'm the person that he'll come to when he needs something.
And if she can't do it, then she's going to tell him who he needs to go to to get it done. So she is his go-to person.
That's why I really was in that class for behavior and not like working-wise, I'll do my part.
Academically, his grades were always where they needed to be. He just did like a 360.
I'm the student council advisor. And Delaren is not on the student council. But on Fridays, we do popcorn sales. And I was short help one day. I was stressed. He's like, Ms. Atkins, stop stressing. It's okay, we got this. I see how he tells other students, like, you know, ma'am, why aren't you doing your work? You need to do your work.
He just not only behaved for himself, but he was impacting his peers.
I'm going to be honest with you, I should do really well.
You want to get a diploma?
Yes, sir.
He didn't want to earn a certificate. He wanted to earn a high school diploma and he's making that happen.
He wanted it for himself and he's doing everything he needs to do to make sure that he is successful.
I'm just part of his continuous growth because from what I hear, he was a problem child. I don't have any of those issues out of him now.
With him making that change has inspired other students to do the right thing and follow his path.
He sees himself as, I was there and now I'm here. So I think other students definitely, definitely will look up to him.
And that's better than any win, any loss on the basketball court. Seeing him win in real life is the most important thing.
Are you proud of yourself?
Yes, sir.
Why would you say that?
Because I feel like I'm the right path.
It's just why we do what we do. It's because of students like him.
And it's all because of the maturity and him deciding that the behavior that he may have been displaying wasn't working.
It's more to the where you got to keep grinding to like grind and get a diploma so you could be something in life. Work hard for what you want and don't ever let nobody tell you that you can't achieve your goals.
I really like to see what the kids come up with.
They can't wait to get here to do this. This is one of their favorite parts of the day.
They just take a lot of pride in what they're doing and that stands out. And let's talk about the goals for today. Our team has worked really hard on trying to use technology in innovative ways. What it means to be an entrepreneur. And we're all entrepreneurs right now because we're starting our own business, aren't we?
They learn to be entrepreneurs. They learn some technology skills to combine with that to create products.
That's the focus for this unit. It's really about being an entrepreneur, about taking an idea, creating a business around that idea.
I love it when they're smiling and when they're so excited to tell you about what they're doing.
I'm working on this tic-tac-toe thing.
After they've researched and they have in their head what they want to create, they took some time drawing it by hand. They created their Google drawing that mirrored their original drawing. And then from there, they uploaded it to the software. And so once they were able to do that, they could actually see the laser cutter in action.
We printed these hearts, made it out of acrylic plastic.
If they liked the model and they felt good about it, then the next step was really to begin advertising.
The thing I most like doing is like doing the commercial. Are you bored of doing homework? I can fix that. When I get home, I just start working on this.
If you're going to do it on your own time, you definitely have to enjoy it.
It has been really fun. It's a lot of hard work. I look forward to it a lot because I'm really excited about it.
They're so excited to share their success and they have some awesome projects that they've created for this Valentine's store.
We give out tickets to each student at Kane Hoys so they're able to come into the Valentine's Day shop, go around to each vendor, each student, and learn about what they have to sell and then choose one item. And that very special item, they get to take home with them.
You know they're feeling that sense of accomplishment and success. And so that's what excites me the most about it when they're excited about what they did and telling you how they did it.
I'm going to be super excited because I work super hard on this. So I hope they enjoy it.
They've gained so much self-confidence so they understand they do possess the qualities that they need to be successful and have those accomplishments. And it is wonderful to see.
I love to come to work every day and Kane Hoys is a very special place. And you can't describe the feeling that you have when you're watching a kid excited about school. You want them to want to be here. You want them to see that, hey, what I'm learning here is going to make a difference for me one day.
You're welcome.
Thank you to your friends that helped you pick out everything.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for what you do. We all are one community. When I was a senior in college, I said, if I ever were to get out and make a difference, let me go and help these kids so they'd be better prepared when they came to college. And I thought I could really go out and change the world from that standpoint. I'm Willis Sanders. I was in the school district 41 years. I'm a native of Berkeley County. My homie here from Cross. Love Berkeley County. My dad always taught me, do a great job where you are. Do the best job that you can. And that would provide the opportunity to someone might think you want to do a greater job at another level. So when I was a teacher, I poured my heart out of being a teacher. She said that's all she ever wanted, a piece of my artwork. And she's been here 20 years. I said, you've been here that long and I've not gotten a piece of my artwork? You can get folks to do anything if you can get them motivated and inspired to do it. So that's how I use my artwork. So Savannah, here's your piece. Kids knew that I could draw and it was my artwork. I said, well, if you want what my artwork cares, what you have to do. We came up with a program where they could win my artwork. So from the time, 1981, where I was a principal all the way through principalship, system superintendent, now I'm as a community person. I'm still producing and sharing my artwork.
Thank you.
No one can tell about where you work better than the person who worked in the system. If someone wanted to come to work for Berkeley County School District, I would say it's a great place to work. Sometimes it's not all about the salary, but the work environment. And when they realize that they are making a difference because of the environment, that's why my theme is sharing time, talent, and treasures at the heart of a purposeful life.
It's party time. We have hot dogs, hamburgers, baked beans, everything you could possibly name, we have and it's all for them.
They let us know that we are really appreciated. Thank you for all that you do. They tell us this all the time. We hear it, now they're showing it and they're really showing it really big today.
Today is called Party, 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 where we are celebrating Bus Driver Appreciation Week.
Everybody get together in their fellowship and we have a lot of eating and then feeding everybody, laughing. Everybody's full.
We're family, doing this Appreciation Week for the bus drivers and the monitors and the aides. It brought us closer. To know that they're the first people up in the morning and probably the last people to get home, like I truly value them because their job is very hard and I commend them on what they're doing every day.
And they come back the next day and we do it all over again, because this is what we love to do. They don't have to be here, they don't want to. They're here because of the kids.
It's worth it for the kids. We try to greet them with that good morning, hello, you know, that hug, that smile.
Some of the kids come on the bus and they're just like, so, can have a bad day, a bad morning, but when they see our face, demeanor change.
Even at the end of the day, the bus driver is the last person that they'll see as far as education-wise, that drops them off.
Appreciation that you guys give to us, we return it back by coming to and doing what we need to do, every day, all day. All about the kids.
500s is gonna be your youth court law ed. I love being the first face people see. Beta Club, that's another really good club, I recommend you join. So when I'm doing tours and things, I make sure that I'm the first fresh face that they see. Just all science classes. So when I'm giving them tours and things like that, they get excited about the school. So mainly English, stuff like that down this hallway. This is going to be your earth science classroom. And I really like the idea of making sure that their first day goes smoothly. My name is Addie, I am in 10th grade at Goole Creek High School. I think we would send out a Google form. I am a Gator Ambassador and that is someone who just kind of helps around the school. They do tours for new students. So we can put Ethan on the posters. A Gator Ambassador helps with everything. Not in this class, but for that event he runs. I'm also part of National Honor Society, Beta Club. Right, mercy, yeah, round of applause. In Beta, everyone has the same interests. They usually all are leaders and they want what's good for themselves and for the future. And so I love feeling like I'm a part of a community with Beta. I love knowing that I'm putting my time into things that matter. One of the main people who helped give me a lot of leadership roles is Ms. Cooper.
Most importantly, there's action items. I think that if you can teach a kid to be a leader, that you are preparing them for life.
In my freshman year, I think she saw something quote-unquote "special" in me.
She is not shy, she is so well put together. She has such a big heart and she takes on these leadership roles. And she's also very connected to our student body in a way that makes their voice heard.
I just, I overall love what I do. I love helping out around the school, I love when making, like in creating relationships with people.
Just to sit back and watch her lead others is just truly humbling.
I know.
She wants to make her parents proud, she wants to make her teachers proud, but more importantly, she wants to make herself proud of what she does and who she is.
She saw something that I didn't even see in myself when I first got here.
And she said she saw something I didn't see in myself. That made me a little sad, cause I'm, how can you not see it? She's just phenomenal.
She was kind of one of those people who kind of pushed the leadership out of me, even though I knew it was already there. She just gave me the roles and made me feel welcome to be a leader in our school.
So I think that's every educator's ultimate goal, is for them to see themselves how we see them.
I love the fact that I have more of a purpose and I want to come to school, I want to be involved in things. I just love being around leadership, around people who are leaders. It's just very rewarding, knowing how far I've come.
Talk about changing culture, that's how you do it. You have somebody that's a freshman or sophomore and then they see them and they are empowered to lead and then they get others to lead and that's what I'm most excited for, for her.
I like making people feel as though they're a part of a community and like they have friends.
People will remember her for a long time, long after she's graduated.
I love their playfulness.
It's love.
How do you know?
Because I can feel it.
I love their heart. My group is so loving and it makes some of the hard days fun. $100, good job, catch it. Good job. The love in this building is just contagious. 70 plus 7 equals? You got it, Whalen, good job. You'll be sitting at your table and teaching a lesson and Savannah, can you turn on your board? Good girl. The light bulb will spark and just seeing their reactions is just amazing. My class is considered cross-categorical, so within that is a range of disabilities. So some of my students, actually predominantly, I have students with autism. But I can also have students with other health impairments, some mild intellectual abilities, medical disabilities, things like that. Can you try that again, using your big boy words?
The chips.
The chips, oh, that's what I thought, okay. Their spirits are so high and so lively and I feel like I can make a difference in their life. Yes or no?
No.
No, we don't, get ready, let's go. Five, 10.
With March of 2020, what was that like for you?
Chaos. It was a lot of chaos, it was a lot of relearning, it was a lot of late nights, struggling to find a balance. Oh gosh, it was hard. No, it's okay, I didn't think I would get emotional. Cause you have your school family, the kids that become your kids. But you also have your own family. So it was hard, it was hard finding that balance. If you wanna use your words, raise your hand and wait, good. The drive was for online learning, you know, digital learning. But with students with special needs, that is not necessarily the best method of teaching, especially when it came to teaching social skills. How do you teach social skills virtually? When you can't do hand over hand, when you can't be next to them, when you can't have them with that quick redirection. So that was, that was a struggle. The social skills and the behavior, some behavioral challenges is what I find myself addressing the most. Michael, calm, 72, 70. A lot of reteaching behaviors, a lot of reteaching skills, how to love themselves, how to make friends, how to talk to people appropriately. I couldn't teach their numbers and letters and grammar if they couldn't build on those skills. So when I call your name, come up to me and come get your math journal. Sutton. It's a beyond, beyond-the-clock job. It's even if you're not doing paperwork, our minds are just constantly thinking about our kids, our school kids. It's a very selfless profession, so you truly have to be passionate in what you do. We are in it for their children, we are here to try and make them become kinder, smarter, more independent.
I love your swing song.
Oh, my students, I love them so much. Gosh, they're such a loving group and they're so playful. I just, I love them, I love them, they're, you know, my other kids. So when I come back, I want you to have five beads on your string. How many beads do you need? Say five. Good, I'll be back. Bye.
Every day is about the students for me.
100% because of the kids.
Just the kids.
Our kids are absolutely our why, why we all do what we do.
Good morning. Hi. I wake up every morning knowing it is my responsibility to give.
I get up and I come to work every day because I need to be here for them.
It makes you feel good, cause it's why we're here. I like what I do and I think it makes a difference.
I could have had any other job in the world, but I'm a teacher.
Being a part of this fraternity of teachers and really making a difference in kids' lives.
Bringing a positive difference to students because I'm helping them think, you know, beyond the classroom.
It's a real collaborative effort. We all bring our parts to the table and say, how do we make this puzzle work as best we can?
Survivors, ready? Go!
When you do something like this, this is the sort of thing that really sticks in their mind and helps them remember things down the road.
I think that's every educator's ultimate goal, is for them to see themselves how we see them.
There are students from Kane Bay's EMS program that are working on ambulances.
The look on these kids' faces and the interests grow, that's just amazing to me.
We are sending kids from Berkeley County into the community that are directly giving back to the community now in terms of the jobs that they are doing. And that's awesome.
Proud is just not even the word, it exceeds that.
I guess I'd just like to be able to give back to the community, you know, since the district's given me so much, you know.
Whatever I need to make the students be successful, it happens here.
We're doing a lot of cool stuff here, there's a lot of neat things happening.
No place I'd rather be than in Berkeley County.
I love Berkeley County because it actually gave me a space. Can you see my eyes? Can you see my eyes? Berkeley County has been good to me, so I absolutely love it. I will give all I have to give to Berkeley County till I can't give anymore.
I'm proud of what we do here. We work as a team, we help each other and we're helping the students and we're making a difference.
They're the reason. And now I have six kids that I've taught that are in law school, or lawyers. I'm just beyond happy and it's because of them.
The satisfaction I get every time I come home at night, knowing that I'm making a difference in somebody's life. I mean, that's what does it for me.
Looking at this picture, what is this section right here that's in between? So what is this whole section right here called?
Sports Medicine at Berkeley High School is a program where students take Sports Med 1, 2, and 3.
We've been learning like anatomy, you need anatomy to be a doctor or anything else like that.
It's not just kids who are interested in sports med, it's people who wanna be doctors or nurses or really anything in the health field, get that opportunity to go in there and get that hands-on experience.
Sports Medicine 3 is like the more hands-on course where they're actually at the games and at the practices helping out.
I love training basketball and football, that's probably my favorites. I'm Carson Taylor, this is my third year in sports medicine. I signed up for it and I was like, this is really, really cool. And so when I started that, that made me realize that like I wanted to be a trainer, so now I'm going to college for that.
It's really important to like have these kids get exposure to different career fields instead of them just going to college and trying to figure it out.
They get to do true hands-on work with the instructor in the sports medicine room.
I love taping and doing modalities.
Just getting their bodies prepared before they start the game.
It is one thing to sit in a classroom and get your typical classroom instruction. It is another thing to get the hands-on collaborative work that our teachers are giving in our career and technical education classes. Learning how to talk to people, learning how to work collaboratively in a group on a real-world, hands-on project, that is something that you don't necessarily get in an academic class.
This is definitely what I'm supposed to be doing. It's super, super fun, super rewarding, so anybody who would want to do it should definitely try it.
Seeing these kids excited to get something has been truly a blessing. Congratulations to you. High five. Christina Wingo, Child Nutrition Supervisor. It's nice to meet you, I'm Christina, I'm from Child Nutrition. National School Breakfast Week was last week, so for each day that students ate breakfast with us, they were entered into a drawing and all of those students were randomly selected and we've been out delivering iPads and bicycles and earbuds. These are for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So some of them are kind of shocked, they're in disbelief, they can't believe that they actually won something. That is for you. You won. Some kids have cried, some have been kind of in a state of shock and weren't really sure what to say.
I won?
You won. That is all for you. I think she loved me more than my own kids do. That is your lucky day girlfriend. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
I'm so glad you're excited. She was really excited. Are you speechless? We've had a great day giving back to Berkeley County and we're just glad to be here to do it. You're welcome. There's this reaction to live for. We love and appreciate all of you.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you.
It's a lot of fun.
I always had a passion for cooking.
It's kind of a break from school.
Making different things, preparing different things, learning different skills.
If you pay attention, you get a whole lot more than just cooking.
Look how nice that is. That's just enough to come together. This is Level 1, Culinary 1. You don't buy sugar like that. Starts at 9 and goes to 11:54, so it's three and a half hour class. So what we're going to do is we're just going to kind of go back forth, go back forth. This facility is treated no differently than a regular restaurant.
This operates as a kitchen.
We're certified by DEHAC. We get two to three inspections a year.
Make sure that we're doing what needs to be done.
Making sure you're being healthy and clean and sanitary. Right now, I'm cutting chicken. I'm just dicing it a little bit. So I'm taking the chicken right now, and we're just wrapping around the bacon. So who wouldn't enjoy like bacon and chicken together?
What do you want, the chicken?
The most exciting thing is when they come on a Monday, say, hey, I just made this. This is what I made for my parents, this is what I made for my dad. And they'll make either something we've done here with a variation or they just decided to create something different.
We made rice. It was very simple. I went home and I made it myself, and it was just as good.
That's really the best thing because they're doing what they're being trained to do, and they show enthusiasm for it. What do you think, Ish? Not bad? I just want kids to have some life skills so they can cook for their little brother, they can cook for their sister. Whether they pursue it at a post-secondary level or not, I just want them to be able to do something for themselves. They can save money and they can eat better. It's been the greatest 18 years. I've got super kids, I have super support from the county. Whatever I need to make the students be successful, it happens here.
I love him. Being in a classroom with him is always fun. Just being around him is fun.
Learning different life skills he teaches us, learning different techniques and different tricks he can use throughout, not just in culinary, but also in your life.
It makes you feel good because it's why we're here. I like what I do and I think it makes a difference. I'm here because of the kids, and I wouldn't go anywhere else.
I think one of the best things about working here at Phillips Simmons is my coworkers. I love the unity among the staff and the camaraderie. I feel like we all get along really well.
I think that's what makes working here and teaching here so fun.
Happy Twins Day. Twins Day is something that we have been doing for about four years now. Every Wednesday, Ms. Bowen and I just like to match. It's just something fun to break up the week. One of our sayings used to be that we could remind people what day of the week it was. We plan our outfits the night before, and it's fun, the kids kind of get in on it too, and it's meant to look forward to. Happy Twins Day. Check it out. It started as an accident. We would show up to work a couple times wearing pretty similar outfits.
Our classic outfit is like black pants, like white tee and a jean jacket.
It just kind of, okay, we'll do it again and then again, and it then just became a thing every Wednesday. And once we did it once, we were like, now we need to keep this up. Haven't skipped a day. We have a couple pictures of when she's not here or during COVID. I had to quarantine. She had to teach from home, so I had her on my smart board, and then I was standing and someone took our picture of me in the smart board, so never miss a Twins Day. She's a real-life twin. She is a real-life twin. A real-life twin-twinning. But most of the time, it's just what we have in our closet. We got this shirt as a gift. A student bought us these shirts. Here's our first, our initial photo, Twins Day. And then we had these two trying to copy us. I think the people that are so nitpicky, like your Apple Watch bands don't match. That's not the same purple whereas like your bracelet, your watch band, and that just like makes it fun. But I think it's just fun to have the people picking on us and something to look forward to in the week. Twins Day, Feliz Twins Day, everyone. I'm even wearing my official Twins Day shirt. I feel like it does bring the school together. And I think that's our goal is to bring joy during the week. It's just something fun to show people we like our jobs, we have fun at our jobs because we're still here for the kids. Happy Twins Day.
Motion to return to regular session?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to return to regular session. On note for the record that no action was taken in executive session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are now in regular session. First, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence. We would now like to welcome Elite Steel from Fox Bank Elementary School under the direction of Ms. Lisa Hamer as they perform one of my favorite songs, "Three Little Birds" by Bob Marley. Thank you all for sharing your talent with us. Thank you, Ms. Hamer, and thank you for Principal Natalie Locklear for sharing. That was great. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize Westview Middle, College Park Middle, and Hanahan High Schools for submitting the beautiful student artwork that has been displayed in the entryway for everyone's enjoyment. Thank you to Westview Middle School Art Teacher Kendall Elks, Principal Sharon Perry, College Park Middle School Art Teacher Megan Harrison, Principal Ingrid Dukes, Hanahan High School Art Teacher Tracy Cromer, and Principal Thomas Gallus. Thank you. The next agenda item is citizens' comments. In order to conduct the meeting in an orderly and efficient manner, we ask that you honor the following guidelines. Stakeholder comments are welcomed and encouraged. However, the board will not take immediate action on public comments at this meeting. Any person wishing to address the board must register prior to the meeting. Comments must be regarding programs, policies, or procedures. Comments regarding complaints against employees other than district-level executives or references to students other than the child of the speaker will not be heard in public session. Groups addressing the same topic should select one speaker. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The board chair reserves the right to allot additional time or halt public comments that do not adhere to these guidelines. The first speaker, I believe, is Deacon Melanie Porcher? Pray back in school is the topic? Yes, sir. That's, yes. Palmer, excuse me, sir.
Thank you. I'm standing in behalf of our children. I'm an ordained deacon, and when I saw the national TV, CBS, showed that those kids got killed in Nashville, Tennessee, I cried. We need to bring prayer back in school. This is why God has turned his back on us because we turned our back on Him. I want to know, who can I talk to? I would go to the White House, the Senator, Congress, but as people, these are our people. I don't care if they're black, blue, purple, or green, they are our people. They are our children. We have to protect our children for the future. So I'm reaching out to the board because I went to my customer and he said, come to the board. So I'm reaching out to the board to see who I can talk to, who can tell me why they won't put prayer back in school. I just saw it displayed just while I go. That made me happy. Salute prayer and pledge to the flag. They don't even do that in school. But we can do it here. Please, tell me who I can contact, talk to, and I'm willing to go anywhere. I would go all the way to Washington. I'm from Jersey City. I moved here in 2010. I went to St. Peter's College, and I know a lot. I was a delegate of a union for Cogate Palmali in Jersey City. I'm just not somebody here talking out of the sound of my, okay? I've been there. I'm 74 years old. We need, as people, put prayer back in school.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment concerning the remarks. We agree with you, sir. You may or may not be aware that the state law requires that every public school have the Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence every day before school starts. So that is law, and in Berkeley County, to rest my recollection, that is enforced.
The next speaker is Sierra Francis Tyron Butler, Goose Creek High School Expulsion Appeal.
Hello. Good afternoon. I had something to say, but as per the guidelines, I don't think it's appropriate. I think it may be more of a personal matter. I was here to talk about an expulsion appeal with my son and, you know, just wanting to, you know, if there can be some grace extended upon him. Like I said, it isn't personal, so I don't know if I should get into it all. I didn't even know if this was appropriate or if I should have came or what, but I did want to just show our face and his face. I know you guys don't know him at all, and that's really just it.
Hello, my name is Tavon Butler, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Catlow.
Evening. I'm Catlow. I'm the high school physics teacher over at Hanahan High School, and I'm the Berkeley County Education Association President, and I wanted to talk to you today about some information that I received when I went to the State House for SEAs Lobby Day. We had the opportunity to speak to Berkeley County delegates. We also got a chance to speak to both the chairs of the House and Senate Education Committees, and their message was clear that the districts have the money to solve this problem of the teacher shortage and staff shortages that we have, that you have the funds to end this crisis. They defined the funds that you had in your general fund. Some use the word slush, just so you know. They think it's up to you to solve this. Multiple Berkeley County delegation members were given last year's Berkeley County teacher contract. All said that this was a contract that they themselves would never sign because of its punitive nature and its ambiguous and the fact they wouldn't know how much they were going to get paid prior to signing it. They are aware that if we sign this and break contract with you, you have every right to take our names to the Department of Education and have our certifications suspended so that we cannot make a living, make our living on the skills that we that we cannot make a living, make our living on the skills that we have acquired for ourselves. One in the Berkeley County delegation, a conservative, actually told us not to sign our contracts. He told many of us this. Don't sign it. You shouldn't sign it. You really need to be aware that the pay and the contract are your instruments to attract and retain the staff and teachers that you need. It's going to be up to you to decide if you're going to make any changes on that front. And this is a crisis, and crisis precipitates change, and we look to you for that change. Again, I just want to point out, members, voted members of our state legislations, legislators said not to sign this contract. This is your contract that you give us. It says things like, "The assignment is my school, Hanahan High School," but in the contract, it tells me that the superintendent has the authority to make changes to that assignment, move me anywhere. And if that's too far away for me and I break contract, you can take my license. It also says, "Perform all duties imposed." Imposed, that's the language, on a teacher by the laws, rules, regulations, and policies. You say, "Perform and insist in extracurricular activities." You never define those things, and I have to sign this and put my credentials on the line. It's punitive, all on your side. What assurances are you going to give teachers so that they know they're going to have a good school year, that they're going to get rewarded in any way? It's up to you. Crisis precipitates change.
Thank you, Ms. Low. The next and last speaker is Ms. Cindy Fisk.
Good evening, Chair McQuillan, Superintendent Dixon, and School Board members. And as you all know, my name is Cindy Fisk, and I am a veteran of 30 years, certified Berkeley County school teacher who retired in June of 2022. I am here to speak to you tonight about recruitment and retention of all of your teachers and all of your employees in the Berkeley County School District. Since November, I have shared some of your employees' stories. However, tonight, I want to encourage you to help all of your employees. I'm so glad that I attended this budget workshop tonight with the Charleston County School District releasing the news that their steps of their current salary schedule has increased from 30 to 40 years. I received many messages from your teachers to inform me that they were actively applying for positions in Charleston County School District because they felt that Charleston County School District respectfully and fairly compensate their teachers, especially when they found out that their veteran teachers with over 30 years' experience would be retroactively paid this current school year. Therefore, I would love to see an increase in the number of steps in this district's salary schedule to occur in Berkeley County School District. In addition, I would like to see that every school board member, as well as past school board members, to kindly encourage your Berkeley County delegation of state legislators to encourage the increase of steps to the current state's salary schedule. The state's salary schedule only goes to year '23. Well, we retire at year '28. At least, the veteran teachers do. This is necessary so that way you know that Berkeley County School Districts can get that state funding that will fund year '23 through '28. Well, that would be less burden on your budget, if you think about it. When I attended Lobby Day on March 8th of this year, the Chair of the Senate Education Committee did say that the districts have all the money, and you teachers need to ask the board members where that money is. While the state legislators gloat that they have done many raises in the past three years for South Carolina teachers, they still have not caught up the salaries to where they need to be since 2008, when our salaries were frozen. You and I both know that. Let me remind you that they also cut programs this past year, like the dual-credit high school program. Thank you for acknowledging the differences in the starting salaries between Charleston and Berkeley County school teachers, and revamping that salary schedule in this district will help retain the teachers, especially since salaries are recurring and not just one-time bonuses. To address all of the employees, I implore you to increase each of their hourly wages. Why? Because you not only have a teacher shortage, but you also have a shortage of staffing in all departments: bus drivers, mechanics, maintenance, custodians, clerical staff, cafeteria staff, and teacher assistants. I remind you of the story I read last week of a teacher assistant in a cross-cat self-contained classroom who got spat on, bit, hit, and such for a $22,000 annual salary. In my opinion, all special education teachers and those teacher assistants in those special education classrooms should be paid on a totally different salary schedule. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fisk. The next agenda item is actions from executive session. We will start with the student expulsion appeals. Do we have a motion in the matter of student number one?
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the appeal of student number one.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of granting the expulsion appeal of student number one, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. The next expulsion appeal is in the matter of student number two. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We deny the appeal of student number two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of student number two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Matter of student number three, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, in the matter of student number three, I move that we deny the appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of student number three. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Matter of student number four, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, in the matter of student number four, I move that we deny the appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of student number four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Matter of student number five, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, in the matter of student number five, I move that we deny the appeal. Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of student number five. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Matter of student number six, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we deny the appeal of student number six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of student number six. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Matter of student number seven, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, in the matter of student number seven, I move that we deny the appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of student number seven. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Matter of student number eight, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, in the matter of student number eight, I move that we deny the appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of student number eight. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Next, we have two motions out of executive session. Ms. Walford?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the personnel recommendations of the administration as discussed in executive session for the current school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Ramsey?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the superintendent to execute a release to fully settle the lawsuit brought by the Berkeley County School District against Jewel Labs, Inc., NMDL, Number 2913 in the amount discussed, consistent with the terms discussed in executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next agenda item is temporary committee assignments. If a quorum is not present, we are good on that front. There will now recess for committee meetings. The first committee meeting, Ms. Littleton, is not here. I'll chair that committee tonight. I'm calling the Committee on Academics and Innovation to order. I declare there are a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second. Yes.
Okay. If you have a motion, I'll second you. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is... The agenda is approved. First item on the agenda is the Head Start Budget Expenditures Report for February 2023 and Head Start Credit Card Report for February 2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next agenda item is Spring 2023 Textbook Adoption. Ms. Denise Ling, you are recognized.
Good evening, Superintendent Dixon, Board Chair McQuillan, School Board Members. The South Carolina Department of Education has approved funding for multiple instructional material adoptions currently. According to BCSD Board Policy IFAA, the adoption of textbooks will be made through a committee process composed of classroom teachers, recommended by their principals, along with subject area coordinators and directors. The adoption process is supervised by the Director of Curriculum and Instruction and the Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. All textbooks' recommendations must be approved by the school board. After a thorough examination to ensure alignment with standards, instructional models, each school submitted a vote with its selection to replace the current textbooks in use that are from previous adoptions. So tonight, we bring to you for consideration the following textbooks for a first reading. For science, High School Biology CP and Honors and Advanced Placement Biology. In social studies, High School Civics, Advanced Placement, European History. For CTE, Advanced Baking and Pastry, Digital Art Design 1, Digital Art Design 1 through 4, Digital Workplace Application, Event and Entertainment Management, Image Editing, Introduction to Teaching, Middle School Exploratory Computer Applications, Sports and Entertainment Management. The textbooks that are here tonight in the boardroom will be on public display for the next two months for stakeholder review and to be able to provide feedback, and the administration recommends the list of approved SCDE textbooks selected by the BCSD Textbook Caravan Committee for first reading tonight.
Thank you. Move to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding the textbooks?
Just a question.
Sure.
Dr. Ling, in the past, all of the teachers that taught biology, for example, in the district within their respective schools had a chance to review these books and make their choice, and then let the school representative know who, what company... Is that the same process? All of the teachers teaching biology had a chance to review these, or just a representative from the school?
I'm going to defer the question to Katie Batkins because she led the caravan review, and I want to make sure we give you the correct answer.
Good evening. So for every textbook that we had up for adoption, the representative would take it back to their school. Well, all of the materials are sent to the schools, and then they meet with their PLCs to look at those textbooks, and then that person is the person who votes for the school. But everyone has an opportunity to see all of the materials.
So all of the PLCs are professional learning community. Are you talking about, let's say, the science department had a chance to review those, and all of the teachers had a chance to review the materials?
Yes, sir. Every biology teacher at each of the high school would have had an opportunity to see them.
So the process hasn't changed much?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying "aye."
Aye.
The ayes have it by a vote of two to zero. The next agenda item is an information-only item for the 2023 summer programs. Ms. Ling?
Thank you. Tonight, we wanted to share with you how the Division of Academic and Innovation is currently creating a menu of summer academic programs aligned to district priorities and goals, student performance data, and specific subgroup needs. This slideshow that you have tonight represents current information about each offering and will continue to be developed with more details. These programs will be by invitation through each school based on the qualifications and/or the academic needs of students. Information about additional camps and programs can be requested from each school as per what's being offered in their community or by their school level. So some of the programs that are being planned for tonight... Y'all didn't pull that one out. You have a handout in your packet that is the slide presentation. Okay, it's in Board Docs. Lacy, set some straight. And tonight's... Tonight's information is more about the dates that the camps will be held, the type of camp it is, the students that it will serve. We will add locations. We will add different services as those are decided. But a few of the things that we will be offering this summer will be an ESOL MLP Elementary Summer Camp, and that is specific to students in K through 5 that are multilingual learners to make sure that they receive extra help during the summer to stay on grade level. That will be offered during the month of June from the 6th to the 22nd. We'll be offering Summer Reading Camp. That will be invited third graders based on their SC-ready scores from the 22, 23 school year. That will be offered during the month of June. We will be hosting the BCSD Junior Scholars Institute during a week in the month of June from the 5th to the 8th, and again from the 12th to the 15th, and these are invited 8th through 11th graders. They're the newly identified SC junior scholars for Grade 8. There are all of the former SC junior scholars and the former identified Duke TIP scholars from Grade 7. We'll also be hosting Summer Step Camp. These will be invited 4th through 11th graders identified as artistically gifted students, and that will take place for two weeks during the month of June. We will be offering Extended School Year, from June 12th until July 20th, including Transition Camp. These are students with disabilities in grades K through 12, and their invitation is determined based on their IEP eligibility. We will be offering two really exciting summer camps this year, one called Code Nation, Summer Coding Camp through the month of June. These are current 6th through 8th graders, and they're interested in computer science and coding. We will also be offering Full STEM Ahead during the month of... During the week of June, the 12th through the 15th, and these are current 6th through 8th grade students interested in STEM and STEAM pathways. We're going to do a Future Ready Career Readiness Workshop. This one is new for us, and very excited about it during the month of June. These are rising 11th and 12th grade students interested in developing their career readiness skills. We'll be having Middle School Content Recovery, and these are 6th through 8th grade students needing content recovery in the core subject areas. High School Credit Recovery during the month of June for 9th graders needing to recover required English or math courses for promotion to 10th grade. And as we develop these programs out, they will operate based on available staff and identified student data through the invitations in an RSVP system. We will hold them in various locations across the district to make sure that we can serve as many students in as many of these programs as possible. We will be providing transportation and meal services to most of these programs, and if needed, programs will also provide to students the needed technology, materials, supplies to hold the camps. So this is just a first glance of what we're offering, and we're still developing and very excited about all the opportunities our students will have this summer.
Thank you, Ms. Ling. Any questions from board members?
I got a quick question.
Sure.
Now, it's my understanding the Future Ready Career Workshop is kind of like an internship program, whereas some of our industries or businesses, we can have two weeks of learning here by educators, but then also two weeks of learning on-site with some of our industries or businesses. That's correct?
Yes, sir. You were in that meeting when we rolled that out to our partners, and it was pretty exciting.
That's right. So I'm just putting that forth for the record, because I know some people like to watch these meetings because it's kind of entertaining sometimes. So I wanted that on the record, that the Future Ready Career Workshop is a great opportunity for any of our businesses, our industries, to get connected with a lot of our young kids, and also for our young kids to be aware that this is a great opportunity to get connected for future... for future employment as well. But thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ling, thank you, Ms. Ling.
Thank you.
This time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. We are now adjourned. Mr. Ramsey?
I'm calling the Committee on Finance and Human Resources to order. I declare it as a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved. Our first agenda item is out-of-state travel. Ms. Marcy, you are recognized.
Good evening, Committee Chairman Ramsey, board members, Chairman McQuinlan, and Superintendent Dixon. Tonight, we are presenting to you out-of-state travel for your approval, and we recommend we recommend award as presented.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the out-of-state travel as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
I do have a, I saw Las Vegas on there two times, and I didn't recognize the program, and I meant to ask you before right this minute, so I apologize for putting you on the spot. But I assume if we're traveling to somewhere like, well, it's for a conference, I think it said in connect schools or innovative schools or something, I was just hope.
Yes, those were.
That particular place people have opinions of, and so I just wanted to know a little bit more about that trip.
Yes, ma'am. Additional consideration was provided for that.
It's an innovation school summit.
Okay.
I think, and it's, the schools, the schools that are attending have special consideration for their participation.
Okay.
Yes.
Sometimes just things throw red flags when people see it, and Las Vegas is one of those things. So I just wanted to.
Yes, ma'am.
It's true. Sorry, it's true. I just wanted to make sure we were, we had thought it the whole way through, so.
Yes, ma'am. We definitely take a second look at those.
Thank you.
It's just like we had some, our band from Goose Creek recently went to Washington, and they went to Arlington Cemetery. I would tell anyone to check out the Goose Creek High School website, and you can see what an amazing trip that was. I got tons of feedback. So in situations like that, I highly support it because it was, a lot of the kids got a lot out of it, so.
It was an amazing trip my son attended.
Yeah.
That's good. I know.
It really filled my heart up because, yeah, a lot of people were talking about how special it was. So just when sometimes folks wonder, well, what are we doing with out-of-state travel? That's what we're doing many times. It's really good things.
And I know, like, on that list is our Beta Club, and we've got lots of students going to Beta Club.
I know your daughter does a lot of good stuff, right.
Yeah, there's a lot of good stuff on there, but.
That's right.
And a lot of times, we don't even talk about out-of-state travel, but that one just kind of, when I was going through the list, just kind of, through, I need to ask a question, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question. These are activity funds, correct?
It's a mixture of funds. There's student travel, there's some activity funds, some, if we're doing staff development type trips, that can be general fund or activity funds. So it's a mixture.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Second agenda item is FY 2223 General Fund Budget Amendment. Ms. Marcy, you are recognized again.
Okay. As we discussed earlier tonight in our budget workshop, I'm bringing tonight to, for consideration, the budget amendment for fiscal year 2223. We have recalculated our projections, our actuals versus the projections that we have for the remainder of the year, and the budget that was approved in June was 369 million. And with the new projections, it looks like we're going to add about $16 million to that to increase our revenues. So we had initially designated $2.5 million to come from fund balance. We will no longer have to pull that money from fund balance. We will deduct it from that additional revenue that we, you see, the 385 million, and that will give us a revenue excess of 13.5 million. We do have some needs as far as cleaning services and custodial supplies. We had some increases there, and so we need to add some funds to those line items in our expenditure budget, but that will leave us with about $13 million that will have an additional revenue. And based on conversations tonight and priorities of administration, we could designate those funds as potential, a potential resource for incentives and recruitment.
So this motion is just to approve the budget amendment, but it doesn't allocate the funds? You're going to come back with a solution to allocate the funds?
Yes, ma'am. Once you, once the board conveys their priority and what they'd like us to do with the additional funding, then we can bring back a balanced budget.
I'm going to echo what I said earlier. I think we need to make a significant investment in recruitment and retention and what we can do to fill these staff positions that we have.
Yes. That is one of the things that we have already discussed, and one of the proposals that we want to bring back is some opportunities for teacher recruitment and retention and to assist in what was presented at the board workshop as well.
Ms. Abrahamson, you, you said you're going to present a balanced budget. What if the board decides we want to increase the amount of expenditure for our salaries and benefits? So that's going to exceed the balanced budget. We're going, we're going to initially indicate a certain amount of money to pay for that coming out of the fund balance, correct?
Yes, sir. If you designate additional funding from fund balance, we can certainly add that consideration. And just when we talk about pulling from fund balance, we just want to be careful not to do recurring expenses from fund balance.
I want to reiterate what, what was discussed in, in the budget workshop. We're at a critical point in retaining and recruiting teachers. We have to make an impact now, and if we give the 10% that I recommended, that's $11 million extra. It would not be a balanced budget. It'd be $11 million over, plus whatever the 28 to 35. But we have traditionally, the last couple of years, when, when the prior board authorized the 4% raise with $1,000 incentive, those funds were initially off, not offset, but said that they would have to be absorbed by the fund balance. That was never the case. We've always exceeded what we, what we projected, and the fund balance has never been decreased. Since I've been on the board, we've increased the fund balance every year. So I do not see a major issue, especially since we're talking about a zero millage increase. We haven't increased millage in Berkeley County School District in seven years. In fact, we've reduced it 12 mills in the general fund and two mills in the capital projects. But with that comes a toll. We've got to make sure that we put our money where our mouth is and make sure that we invest in our people.
Just for clarification, this is for the current year budget, so this money would need to be used by June 30th, so it wouldn't cross over into next fiscal year, the 2324. So if we're talking about the increases that we're doing for next fiscal year, recommendation from administration would be to do another one-time incentive payment in May to all employees. Something like that would be doable.
Because it's one-year money, right?
Pardon me?
Because it's one-year money. It's this year's money.
That's correct. That's correct.
Any more discussion?
I'm not on your committee, but I would like to interject that I realize we need teachers, wholeheartedly, 100%, but please keep in mind, we still have support staff that goes behind the scene and does whatever the teacher doesn't do. In particular, I'm still looking out for my bus drivers.
I'm with you with the bus drivers. I'm with you, ma'am.
My custodians, my cafeteria workers, they are still not up to the level they need to be, even if you decide to give them an additional one-time stipend again this year in May. We still need to take a look at the salary book, which I hadn't done like Mr. Barrows. I didn't pay attention to every line, every category, but I think with our cafeteria workers, the managers, their salaries need to be increased. So if it means that me, I need to look at the salary book a little closer. I, I mentioned to Dr. Dixon about Head Start, and he told me that's a federally funded program, but they're still us.
Exactly.
So they're looking to enjoy some of the goodness of the district. So somehow, Dr. Dixon, we're going to work it out for them.
Yes, so when.
Not to put you on the spot.
You're not. When Ms. Abrahamson was saying that that's a one-time funding for this year, we are definitely, you know, we're not just speaking of our teachers, but we're speaking of all, and we want to make sure we are consistent with that practice that it is for all employees.
Okay. So I want our custodians, our bus drivers, I love them. But at the same time, I do understand the importance of teachers, but at the same time.
So we've.
Forward.
Right, so we, you know, we are consistent with our message that teaching and learning is, you know, or will remain first and foremost, but we also are consistent in our messaging that we talk about BCSD connects and that every person, every employee is a key player, every member of this board is a key player into ensuring that teaching and learning remains a priority for our district, i.e., we can't begin teaching and learning if we don't have safe schools, safety and security. We can't get, education can't start, you know, without the bus drivers at 5:00 in the morning picking up, without the cafeteria running, without payroll, you know, making sure people are paid on time. So each person in Berkeley County Schools are their valuable employees, and they all work together for the good of ensuring that, making sure what our teachers do when they get into the classrooms, they have those needs met so we can do. And so for that, we recognize everyone. Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to mention that administration has had several discussions about the salary scales and where we are with the salary book, and we agree that we need to take a deep dive into that. That's going to be a process, and we were, there are discussions now to form a committee to get started on that early next year, but to do what we can this year to, to address those positions that you discussed.
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the committee?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve fiscal year 2223 General Fund Budget Amendment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And that we're approving this money unallocated, but Ms. Abrahamson is going to come back with allocations for this, hopefully at the next board meeting, so it can be paid out this fiscal year.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do we have a second? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Okay, our third agenda item is RFQ 673 22-23 A&E Services for IDQ Contract. Ms. Marcy, you are recognized again.
Thank you. This RFQ was conducted to secure a contract with highly qualified firms to provide professional design services for various projects throughout the district. The RFQ yielded 12 responses, which were scored by the selection committee. Interviews were then conducted with the five highest-ranked firms, and after completing the interview process, a second round of scoring was completed, and the selection committee is requesting award to the three highest-ranked firms, which are Brownstone Design LLC, Mosley Architects PC, and FW Architects Incorporated. This is, this is a qualifications-based procurement, and there will be a single project limit of $100,000 with a total contract value not to exceed limit of $300,000.
What is the pleasure of the committee?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the award of RFQ 673 2223 for A&E Services to be provided by various district projects on an as-needed basis to Brownstone Design LLC, FW Architects Incorporated, and Mosley Architects PC for a maximum term of two years or until the next not to exceed maximum of $300,000 is realized, whichever occurs first.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Our fourth agenda item is RFP number 675 22-23 Website Hosting and Parent Notification System. Ms. Marcy, you are recognized again.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This solicitation was conducted to obtain a contract to acquire a secure and flexible website hosting and parent notification system that is user-friendly with streamlined technology and competitive rates and fees that will accommodate the needs of both non-technical and technical users. This was a competitive bid process with a total of five bids received. The initial contract term is for one year with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms. After tabulation and evaluation, the highest-ranked responsive and responsible offer was Apogee Incorporated with an initial contract, with the initial cost being $286,000 and an estimated five-year contract term, contract value of $1,234,000.
What is the pleasure of the committee?
I move to approve RFP 675 2223 for a website hosting and parent notification system to Apogee Incorporated for an initial one-year term valued at $286,000 with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms with an estimated contract value of $1,234,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Walford.
So this is something that gets me all fired up, but please, Lord Jesus, make it user-friendly. Sometimes we put stuff out and we say it's like, you know, paperless and all this stuff, and you want me to print the piece of paper out and sign the piece of paper and scan it in, and it's not really paperless. So I just really want this to be really parent-user-friendly, because when I'm doing that stuff, I realize that there are parents who cannot, do not have access to the things I have access for. So we've spent money on the past on different things. I just really, really, really want it to work and actually work for all the parents. So every time I see something like this, I get up on my little soapbox because I fill out all the papers, and I only have two kids. Some people have four kids and six kids, and they fill out the paper six times. So I just want to advocate for it to be very user-friendly.
Am I understanding her question correctly, your comment? It's a parent notification, so.
But it's, it's website hosting. You put your information in, it sends you notifications back. Like, I think it just needs to work for all parents and be able to be something that you can easily access and that will easily send, like, that I'm not writing my information down on a piece of paper to turn in for somebody to enter into a system. And I don't know who is going to tell me how it works, but I'm assuming that this is just going to take the information we have in Power School and send out notifications. It's not going to be more pieces of paper that some teacher has to type into more stuff.
So this is a little different. This is actually our website platform itself for the public, and then our parent notification system, meaning where you get your crisis information, your texts, your phone calls, your emails.
So where does that information that you text me from, come from? Is it from the piece of paper that I fill out that a teacher has to, like, put into the system? Or is it from when I register my kids for school? Does that question make sense?
So your notification information comes from Power School, which is part of school registration, which is not necessarily the same system. This is replacing the system we currently use because that vendor was acquired by another one and went away. So we have to have a website hosting platform and then a communications platform, which is where the district does mass communications.
Okay.
A little bit separate from the systems that are used for registration, Power School. Power School feeds into this, but it does not replace Power School.
Yes, I feel like I put my information lots of places, so I want to narrow that in a, this solution can narrow that.
This is helping us to narrow it when it comes to the communications information. We have had a lot of feedback from parents that when I have a third grader, I have to have this app for this teacher, and when I have a middle schooler, I have this app for this purpose. From the communication side, this moves us to one hosting platform. Apogee will provide us with an app that everyone can use for all the purposes of communicating with parents, but when it. But when it comes to instructional forms, registration forms, that's a separate system with technology through Power School, Schoology, and those platforms. This is specific to communication.
I would say, as much as we can narrow that for teachers not having to enter things in and for parents not to have to fill out more paperwork, as much as we can narrow that is amazing.
And I don't want to speak for Ms. Driggers, but we have some requirements for our instructional platforms that we have to use that is separate from website hosting.
Okay.
So that, that means I don't get a second call? I don't get a third call for communications right now? My children at Cross High School, so I get one call at six o'clock. I hear Ms. Presley's talking. In the middle of her conversation, it starts over again. So this will help with the repeating conversation. She, she, she doesn't finish the first one before it clicks and gives me a second announcement of the same thing.
So that is something that we discussed with the previous vendor, but this is a completely different vendor, and we have discussed some of those issues. I will tell you, the reason that they tell us it does that is if it picks up any sound, it's gonna repeat the message.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I won't fuss at Ms. Presley.
Yes, yes.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I just want less is more in this scenario, where parents are connected without having to do lots of different things to be connected.
Yes, and from the communications standpoint, that is what we are accomplishing with this, but it doesn't replace everything.
Okay. That'll just be my lofty aspirations.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Our fifth agenda item is R F Q number 682-22-23 Task Order Contract for General Contractor Services. Ms. Marcy, you're recognized again.
Thank you. This R F Q was conducted to secure a contract with highly qualified licensed general contractors to complete various mid-scale projects over the next five years. Under the terms of the Task Order Contract, projects or task orders may be used to perform work ranging $90,000 to $350,000. The R F Q yielded three responses. All respondents were deemed responsive and responsible. Therefore, the selection committee is requesting award to all three respondents, which are N Finger Construction Group LLC, J Muselman Construction, and Stenstrom and Associates Incorporated. There is a single project limit of $350,000 with a five-year contract term or a maximum not to exceed limit of $4 million.
Before you ask your question, Mr. Ramsey-
Go ahead.
What kind of work would they do as a contract? I know what he does. So would they oversee a job, or would they complete the job?
They would complete the job, and our capital projects managers would oversee those contractors.
And it would vary depending on what's needed?
Yes, ma'am.
And you would just pick up the phone, call them, we have A, B, C we need done, and-
Typically, what we do is we will take a project that needs to be done, and we will get all three of them to quote the project. And then we will, we still compete it internally amongst the three contractors.
All right.
I've got another question about that similar. This is a capital project, right?
The majority, yes, sir.
So these are large or small, medium projects? Because we, we just passed, the voters just passed a penny sales tax in the amount of at least $60, $60 million a year. So if it's capital projects, I know if it's not listed on the, on the ballot, what are these for?
This will not be used for the penny sales tax projects. These are our capital projects for facilities, based on our facilities assessments or projects. If we by chance had a hurricane come through and a tree limb went through a roof and we needed to-
So this is a contingency fund. It's not something that should have been included in the, in the, in the referendum?
No, sir, this is the capital projects, which is a secondary budget that is separate from the one cent sales tax and the general fund. This is that capital projects budget that we'll be presenting in June. And then we usually typically get that eight percent money in September.
But, but these, these people are, are construction contractors.
Yes, sir, they are licensed contractors.
So it would be a fairly significant R F P. Or you've already, you've already authorized a payment. So I, I just don't know what building needs there are.
We haven't authorized any payments. We're just getting a pool of contractors together so that when our needs, when the need arises and we have a project that needs to be completed that is outside the scope of our facilities division and we need a licensed contractor, we will pull from this pool of contractors and have them come in and handle the project.
Is the board gonna have to authorize that?
No, sir. You're authorizing that here, and then we'll use it as needed.
But this would be like that, uh, storage building you've been complaining about for a long time, Jimmy, over at Stratford High School, that the district's not got fixed yet?
How am I to know that those three companies, how, they gonna bid, each one of them again?
When we have a project, we'll have them come in and survey the project and look at it, and we'll get them to give us a price. I mean, depending on the size of the project or availability and how quickly we-
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, exactly. How quickly we have to have it done. But we have to work within the scope of this task order contract. So we can't do a single project above $350,000, and we can't exceed $4 million in a five-year period.
But you are saying they're still going to bid it, those three companies?
We will still compete it to some degree, because we want to make sure we're getting the best contractor for the project.
I know that sounds tacky, but-
Yes.
I don't want someone in our office to say, oh, it's okay if we spend $350,000 for Project A.
No, sir, we would, we would look at that project. We would have all of them put together a proposal for that project and then select the best qualified candidate for that project.
So what's the difference in, in doing an R F P when the, when the time arises?
Timing typically, we're able to move faster on these type of projects.
I've got some issues with this.
So the state, they did this kind of in place of pre-qualifying contractors that they used to do.
Yes, this is a new contract.
Now they do task order contracts, where you're essentially pre-qualifying contractors, and then you set the limit of $350,000. It's gotta be a minimum of 90. And then there's still architects and engineers designing the projects, correct?
That's correct.
So those are the overseers, you just have your three bidders.
It's a new construction procurement method that came with the new code. It used to be called an indefinite delivery contract. Now it's called a task order contract.
But when a, when a project does arise, that'll be something that will be on Mr. Baker's committee, at least update him that, look, we've got this project. This one was the most competitive bid, and here's why we're using them, and-
Exactly.
Okay.
I definitely feel like this committee should be a little involved in that. I mean, of course, I still don't know what special projects are, which ones are this year.
Well, we are kind of involved when you, when we present to you the capital project budget for the, at the beginning of every year and tell you what capital projects are forecasted, and you're approving that budget. This is essentially pulling from that budget, that you've already approved the project.
Let me digress a second, because I probably should do it in the next session when we, when we approve.
Just committee right here.
Yeah, 'cause, well, I wanted to go back to one that we, you've already had your committee approve, but I've got a question about that. I'll just wait until it comes before the full board.
On this one here, what is the pleasure of the committee?
I move to approve the award of R F Q 682 for General Contract Services to N Finger Construction Group LLC, J Muselman Construction, and Stenstrom and Associates Incorporated as a task order contract with a single project limit of $350,000 for a maximum term of five years until the $4 million monetary cap is realized.
Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The motion is approved by a vote of two to one. Our sixth agenda item is I F B number 684-22-23 Running Track Renovations Resurfacing at Kane Bay High. Ms. Marcy, you're recognized again.
Yes, sir, this project was an invitation to bid to secure a contractor to renovate and resurface the running track located at Kane Bay High School. The work consists of replacement of the existing asphalt track and field facilities to include the following: athletic channel drain systems, H D P E drainage systems, concrete sidewalks, concrete curbing, asphalt paving, synthetic track resurfacing, in-ground track equipment, and fencing. The completion date of this project is expected to be August 31st, 2023, with a substantial completion date of August 1st.
What is the pleasure of the committee?
Sorry, the awardee is K T C Enterprises Incorporated for a total bid amount of $882,594.86.
I just want to know that these are not the folks who did the Berkeley High School initial track renovation.
Yeah, they're not.
And this was not included as part of the one cent sales tax, Kane Bay High School?
No, ma'am.
Wasn't there a project for the resurfacing of tracks for the entire district? I remember that once before.
We have a district-wide account for track resurfacing, and we've, we've done Goose Creek High and Berkeley High. Now we're doing Kane Bay High.
What is the pleasure of the committee?
I move to approve the award of I F B 684-22-23 for Running Track Renovations and Resurfacing at Kane Bay High School for K T C Enterprises Incorporated for a total contract value of $882,594.86.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Thank you so much, Ms. Marcy. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn this committee meeting so that we can return to regular session.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. The next, we're back on regular session. The next item on the agenda is the Finance and Human Resources Committee Report. Chair Michael Ramsey.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Finance and Human Resources met earlier this evening, and on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the out-of-state travel as presented.
We have a recommendation from committee, so no second is required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Also on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve R F P number 675-22-23 for a website hosting and parent notification system to Apathy Incorporated for an initial one-year term valued at $286,000 with an option to renew for four additional one-year terms with an estimated total contract value of $1,234,000.
We have a recommendation from committee, no second is required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Also on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the award of I F B 684-22-23 for Running Track Renovations and Resurfaces at Kane Bay High School to K T C Enterprises Incorporated for a total contract value of $882,594.86.
We have another committee recommendation, no second is required. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm like the other board members, I don't, I thought that we were going to have athletic field and athletic facility upgrades as part of the penny sales tax. So doing this now, and it's not gonna be ready until next year anyway, we could, it seems to me that this should be a part of the penny sales tax, because this is April. That was approved in, in November. So we should start getting some of the proceeds fairly soon from, or we could at least borrow against the proceeds from the penny sales tax. I don't know why we'd be spending money out of the, out of the existing capital projects fund if it could be incorporated into the penny sales tax.
There may be another need for it, though, too, at Kane Bay, if that was one of the listed ones. Like, for example, I know Phillip Simmons is bleacher expansion. It may not necessarily be track.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't understand a word you said.
I said it may be that there are other expenditures for the penny sales tax related to athletic facilities other than track. Like, for example, I know Phillip Simmons, they're wanting to expand bleachers. It may be that, that they don't have the, we don't have the funds.
Understood, but those, those, it was never defined. It was if it was just for a football field, it said athletic facility upgrades. And a, a track is an athletic facility. But just a question, because I, I just, I don't see it.
That was a capital project, for last year's capital projects. That particular track at Kane Bay, it was approved last year during capital projects. There are, on the sales tax referendum, I can't remember the schools for sure, but I know one is Cross High, and I'm thinking it may be Timberland. They're getting new tracks out of the sales tax referendum. And the other facilities were, it was AstroTurf, for the athletic improvements.
I guess I'll have to listen to the video, 'cause I didn't understand a thing you said either.
Well, what she said was that last year, we approved a budget for this track to be approved at Kane Bay, so it was already part of our budget. And the sales tax referendum does include athletic facilities. But the sales tax referendum does not, is not gonna solve all our problems in our capital projects. I mean, it's gonna help us with, with a lot of things, but right now, you know, we got, like you said, we got some money in the new sales tax fund coming, but we got two new schools that we gotta get rolling on and get building, so. But what Ms. Drigger said was, we had approved it last year in the budget, is why we're doing it now.
We approved it in the budget?
It was in the, it was in the capital projects budget for 22-23, the track renovation at Kane Bay High.
It's just been on the, it's been in process on the books for a while, I would say, is why it is, or how I understand it to be why we're addressing it now.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dixon?
All right, thank you, Board Member McQuillan, Board Chair McQuillan, and ladies and gentlemen of the board, and our staff and fine citizens of Berkeley County School District. I would like to begin, as we always do, by first recognizing our Teacher Forum representative, Ms. Stephanie Williams, teacher at Kane Bay Elementary. I had a great opportunity to share with her this weekend and watch her wonderful son athlete run track this weekend. So welcome and thank you for all you do for our schools as a representative of Teacher Forum. This week is the week prior to spring break, and as we put a close on this week, I would like to honor the hard work of all of who work in Berkeley County School District. You work day in and day out to achieve our mission of making a positive difference, even when it is hard. We are gearing up for spring break, and for those of you who have the opportunity to rest, please use this time to recharge and focus. If you are reporting to work during spring break, I hope that you do have the opportunity to be free of distractions and to catch up on your daily tasks and operations. I know we would certainly enjoy that time. You are definitely appreciated as valuable members of our school district, and I thank you again for creating a school system where our students thrive. This week, we honor our assistant principals during National Assistant Principals Week, and so we thank you for supporting. We thank each and every one of our assistant principals for supporting your principals and schools and being there to ensure that teaching and learning is able to occur on a daily basis. We also honor our school librarians. As a school librarian, you place an essential, you play an essential role in shaping the future of our students and their academic success. Your dedication, expertise, and enthusiasm for the work you do is truly admirable. We are so fortunate to have such high-quality professionals in our assistant principals and our school librarians in Berkeley County Schools. Berkeley County School District, as we shared in our last board meeting, has, was selected as this year's recipient of the Council of School Networks, the COSIN 2023 Team Award. This is a, a national award. It was a major recognition, and it recognizes the outstanding leadership team whose use of technology and impact on student learning has been, that has been transformative for its school systems. The national network is deeply- The National Network is deeply impressed with the level of commitment exhibited by our team of technology in our Office of Technology and the impact their initiatives, like their ITO and many others have on student success and the way they incorporate innovation, innovative learning, innovative technologists and just the work they do in terms of infrastructure and ensuring that our, we are communicating in innovative ways and working in partnership with various stakeholders. So at this time, I would like to formally congratulate, I think they, not I think, I know they are here. And they've been waiting patiently in the helms, but congratulate our Chief of Technology, Ms. Diane Diggers, and every member of our Office of Technology and the members that are here this evening to celebrate with us and to include, and I don't wanna leave anybody out, but I see Marty, I see Jason Frazier, Jeff, I see Priscilla. I see some old Daniel Allen folk. You see all our wonderful technology people. If you can, please come up and take a picture and bring your award to be recognized. Just come up front here. Marty, lead them right through here.
I'm sorry. Thank y'all for doing this and it really did mean a lot to our department to bring Berkeley County in the spotlight and a national, like winning a national award. And it felt good for us to be recognized and I could only take three people. We could not go to Austin. I appreciate Dr. Dixon going with us, but it did mean a lot to us to win this award.
So again, congratulations to our Office of Technology. Thank you for your hard work. I also wanna say congratulations to Casey Giddens from Westview Middle, Maria Davis from Hannahhan High School, and Jacqueline Bress, Bress Roddenkirk from Fox Bank Elementary on being selected as top three finalists for District Teacher of the Year. We will name the District Teacher of the Year at the Annual Teacher of the Year Breakfast on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three on the campus of Trident Technical College. And we certainly would like all of our board members to join us in this celebration if your schedules allow. This is the time of the year for budgeting and planning, as you know, but our district and school teams are in the midst of writing their strategic renewal plans. A link will be provided to all board members to review the drafts of the school renewal plans for board member review and we will bring them to the board for full review and approval at our next board meeting. Finally, new registration, student registration, registration begins today. So please check online to learn more about registering your students. You can find all of this information and more at the website at www.bcsdschools.net. This concludes my report for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon.
I have a question for Dr. Dixon and I thought you were gonna answer my question about school safety. The email. In light of what happened in Nashville, I wrote Dr. Dixon, I sent him an email. What are our safety precautions? What are we doing? What is our safety team thinking about? When was the last safety, when was the last safety inspection of our school? If that young lady could take a gun and blast out the glass to get in, what are we doing? How safe are our schools? So when the Deacon Palmer mentioned prayer in school and we talked about moment of silence, it, it still dawned on me, we need to take a safety check of each of our schools to make sure we're doing what we need to do to protect our children.
I will say they, they are doing that and I think this was before you got on the board, but we had safety and security updates with the sheriff's office and our security team.
So then can I ask that they come back and do that again? Just give me some idea.
Yeah.
What can I tell a parent that's afraid to send their child to school?
Tim Knight can give you more information everyone to know, but the cool thing, not cool thing, but they study these specific situations and learn from those and do all sorts of training. But I was very, I went to the one at Phillip Simmons they had, which I think was the last one. It was somewhat close to the election, but it was, it was a very informative meeting and they've got PowerPoints and videos and stuff they show. But I would talk to Tim Knight about that. He can, he can definitely.
Yeah, but PowerPoints do not, I know we do Active Shooter. I saw them at Goose Creek and I've seen them at Stratford. But the problem still remains with me is they're in, they get in. How can we help prevent them not coming in? And I know our children bring these weapons all the time. So parents, you need to check your child as well. But when they get in the building, then our children are not safe. So yes, they can come and present, but everybody needs to know, what safety precautions does Berkeley County School District have in place?
Agreed.
So after that situation happened, that I received a letter from Dr. Dixon showing some of the things that were going on currently as far as safety. Cuz I had some of the same concerns from some of my constituents. And how I replied was, here's a letter that I received from Dr. Dixon showing the things that Berkeley County School District is doing to keep your children safe. Also, that it's not everything we're doing, that we're still continuing. But I remember receiving that letter from Dr. Dixon.
Okay, I'll resend that to you, but we do have a very capable team and group that can come and speak to that. The security and safety checkups, the measures that they're currently doing and actions that they, you know, wanna take in addition. But I'll, I'll definitely inadvertently left your name, but I'll ensure you get that email.
What about metal detectors or is that still a controversial talk for this area?
So metal detector, there's several, I think, at the School Board Association Conference. There was a huge session on safety and security and the speaker specifically, you know, gave some really key topics on the pros and cons of metal detectors in schools and the, the, from the pros to the additional pressures that it puts on employees by having, our teachers by having to then be in charge of it. So there's, there's several different opinions on the metal detectors.
I'm just concerned. When I saw that and, and I couldn't release that image and I look at Cross High School, I look at some of the other ones that have these double doors, glass that can be just destroyed as, as quickly and as easily as that. So it sent an unnerving feeling for me.
Yes, definitely is. I agree.
Alright, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is Board Chair Update. As mentioned at the last meeting, the South Carolina School Board Association's Day at the Capitol is Wednesday, April nineteenth at the Columbia Metropolitan Convention Center. I know there was information in our packet last time. If you would like to attend, please let Lacy know and she can get you registered. And as Dr. Dixon mentioned, the Teacher of the Year Breakfast will be on April twenty-eighth at Trident. And so mark your calendars for that. That's all I have by way of board updates. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Are we recognizing the week of the young child?
Say that.
Are we recognizing the week of the young child?
If you'd like, if you'd like to say something on that, you're welcome to.
Okay, so this week, we are celebrating the week of the young child and especially with our Head Start Department child care centers. So I just wanted you all to know that. And if you are a parent of a young child or a child in Head Start, please definitely, you're invited to the festivities.
Thank you. Alright, this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. We are now, any opposed? We are now adjourned.